Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Sinks. Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Calendar.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Sharp.
Here. Yeah, Councilmember Chow said she can't find the link, but I think it was in the calendar, right? I mean, that's where I got mine. So anyway, we have a quorum. So our first item is a study session, the presentation on the transition from level of service to vehicle miles traveled, VMT, for determination of transportation impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as required by Senate Bill SB 743. So can we have the staff presentation?
Good evening, Councilmembers. I will give a very brief introduction so we can save most of our time for discussion for this item. But I just wanted to introduce, this is the long awaited study session on the transition from level of service to vehicle miles traveled, as required by law. Although there are many areas we're looking for council input this evening, there really are two critical questions that we need to answer. One is what should Cupertino's VMT thresholds be? And the second is what should Cupertino's VMT mitigation measures be? To help focus the conversation, there has been a decision matrix that's been added as an attachment to the white paper, as Attachment A. So if you could have that open and ready, it will help guide the conversation a little bit, and also has both the questions we need to answer and the recommendations that we're making. So with that, we have several members of our consultant team from Fair and Peers with us tonight. Teresa Winery, Dan Rubens, and also Julie Morgan that will be leading a presentation that will be the first portion of the study session. And then the second portion will be a discussion and get feedback so that we can return to council as soon as possible with the resolution. So with that, I'd like to introduce Teresa Winery, who will be sharing the first portion of the presentation.
Great.
Good evening, everybody. Let me just get the presentation shared on my screen. Can you confirm that everyone can see the presentation?
Yeah.
Great. Good evening. So my name is Teresa Winery. I'm here with my colleagues, Dan Rubens, who is the project manager on our end for this project, as well as Julie Morgan. And we'll just be walking through a few high-level concepts in this presentation, such that we can have a more focused discussion on the elements that Chris mentioned earlier with regards to the transition from LOS to VMT under SEQA. So in terms of what we're going to be talking about today, I'll be leading us through kind of the first part of this presentation, which is an overview of the transition, sort of the how and the why of what exactly is happening, talking through what is VMT, a brief overview of Senate Bill 743, and a summary of the decisions that each lead agency, including the city of Cupertino, will need to make with regards to that transition. I'll then be handing it over to Dan, who will talk through some of the more focused items in both the white paper and in the decision matrix, which is included as Attachment A to that white paper. And with that, we'll get into some more Cupertino-specific information and really talk through some of our initial findings with regards to the options available for Cupertino, as well as what actions the council will need to make next. So simply put, VMT, or vehicle miles of travel, is a metric that we use to look at how much vehicular activity is occurring in a given area or due to a given project. One VMT is equivalent to one car or truck going one mile on the roadway system. So if you have, for instance, four cars going 10 miles each, that would be 40 VMT. We tend to look at this in very aggregated amounts. So you might look at it for all of the trips to and from a given project or development, or you might look at it as all of the trips on a given roadway system, for instance. Now, this is important right now because we are entering kind of the last phases of implementation for Senate Bill 743. So Senate Bill 743 was signed into law by Governor Jerry Brown in September of 2013. And what it does is it sets legislative intent that they wanted to still look at the environmental impacts of traffic, vehicular traffic, such as noise, air pollution, and safety, make sure that those are addressed and mitigated through the SEQA process, but also to balance some of the statewide goals that had been set through previous legislation related to promoting infill development over greenfield development, promoting active transportation, and reducing statewide greenhouse gas emissions. So we kind of use SB 743 as an umbrella for the entire process, including the updates to the SEQA guidelines. And what this process does is, in the updated SEQA guidelines, it eliminates vehicular delay, or level of service, as a basis for determining significant impacts under SEQA for transportation. It recommends VMT as the most appropriate measure of those transportation impacts in lieu of LOS. And it also notes that there may be other considerations that agencies may wish to look at, which include transit, non-motorized travel, walking, biking, and the such. However, there's a bunch of stuff that it doesn't do. So first off, it does not affect any of the planning, design, or development review process that occurs outside of SEQA. So all of those processes remain intact or may have some change based on the fact that there is no longer the capability to do an LOS analysis as part of the SEQA process. It does not change any of the goals set forth in the general plan or the congestion management plan process, which means that the LOS standards set forth in your general plan still remain and can be a basis for evaluating projects for approval. And also doesn't change the fact that SEQA is, at its heart, a document that's intended for disclosure. So it will likely change the types of projects that will have significant impacts due to transportation compared to kind of pre-SB 743. However, it does not affect the ability for an individual lead agency to adopt a statement of overriding concerns and to approve a project, even if it does have a significant impact. And so when we talk about SB 743, it's kind of this lump of different items. There's really three key items that we're looking at right here. We have the initial legislation, which set the intent and goals. We have SEQA statute itself, which is the legal requirements and the actual law that sets forth what constitutes an adequate environmental analysis. And then we have the technical advisory. So the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, as part of this process, has issued a technical advisory that walks through some general recommendations for lead agencies in performing VMT analysis. And what that does is that offers advice for compliance. It does not have the full force of law behind it. It is not mandating the use of any of the elements included therein. However, it does provide a high-level overview of what the state is thinking, maybe appropriate metrics, methods, and thresholds. Which brings us to our next slide, which is looking at the decisions that each lead agency needs to make in order to fully implement SB 743. So these are the areas where lead agencies have discretion under SEQA and may determine their own metrics, methods, thresholds, and mitigation measures for VMT. So the metric is really just asking, how do we want to express the way that individual projects are affecting VMT or generating VMT? Do you want to look at totals or per capita? Do we want to break it down into different pieces? The methods are how you reach those metrics. So that is generally going to be through a travel demand model, but maybe through some separate spreadsheet methods, or what we call sketch planning methods. There's the threshold, which is one of the larger decisions that each agency will need to make, which says, when do we determine that a change in the VMT on our roadway system is a significant impact to the environment? And then mitigation, which are the measures available to projects that may have an impact in order to mitigate it to the extent possible and feasible. So with the metrics, there's a couple of different ways to look at VMT and consider VMT. We've broken them down into two general categories. The first one being project-generated VMT, or you may also refer to it as city-generated VMT, zone-generated VMT. And that really looks at all of the activity associated with a single project, a single parcel, a single city. And it sums up all of the trips that begin, end, or both begin and end within a given area. But it doesn't include any cut-through traffic. So if you have a trip that is, say, going, if you have any traffic on 280 through Cupertino, for instance, that would not be included in here unless it had at least one end of that trip in Cupertino. The second is boundary VMT, which we can use to look at a project's effect on VMT. So this takes a given area. So in this case, you can think of the square as, say, the Cupertino city boundaries, and looks at all of the VMT that occurs on roadways within those boundaries. So in this case, traffic on 280 would be included in the VMT total, along with any trips that are fully within Cupertino, and the portion of any trips that begin or end in Cupertino that are within those boundaries. So this first one is really looking at, like, regionally speaking, what are the trips associated with a given place or project? And the second is looking at your roadway system and how much traffic is on it. In terms of methods, it can get quite technically detailed here. Generally speaking, the most common method for assessing VMT is going to be through a travel forecasting model. For Cupertino, VTA maintains the Santa Clara County model. You can also look at non-model accounting methods. So those can be as simple as, say, taking a trip generation number times the average trip length, or they can use existing model outputs. So for instance, VTA has released a countywide VMT screening tool that's online, and that would be considered one of these non-model accounting methods. In terms of thresholds, right here, we're highlighting the threshold that has been presented by OPR in the technical advisory, and is generally seen as one of the more common thresholds that agencies are adopting. And that is a per capita or per employee VMT that is 15% below that of existing development. So again, this is a recommendation. It is not a mandate. And then you have flexibility in terms of what exact percentage you may want to adopt, as well as some level of flexibility in defining what existing development is. OPR's recommendation is to use the regional average. However, different municipalities have chosen different baselines for that threshold. And one thing that we really wanted to talk through is where that 15% comes from. So the 15% presented in OPR and the technical advisory is really based on our statewide greenhouse gas reduction targets. So this is a chart that essentially shows the projected California population growth. That's the blue line. Baseline VMT, if we just kind of continued business as normal, which is the red line. And then what we have in the green line is really the capacity for VMT growth. So that green line states that if we look at all assumed increases in EV use, so increased electrical vehicles, increased fuel efficiency, and take all of that into account, how much additional VMT can we still allow on the roadway system in order to meet the greenhouse gas reduction goals that the Air Resource Board has put forth? So if we look at that on a per capita basis, so on a per-person basis, so controlling for that growth in the blue line, we get a chart that looks more or less like this. And so this is looking at... So this green line here really represents the per capita VMT. So this is that VMT rate that we would need to achieve to hit our greenhouse gas production goals, divided by the population growth. And as you can see, if you take the 2017 baseline, that would require about a 14.3% reduction from that existing number to reach the greenhouse gas production goals by 2050. So that's approximately 15%. Similarly, if you look at not all VMT, but only VMT by light-duty vehicles, so that's going to be cars and light trucks, you would need a 16.8% reduction if you look at only trips by those vehicles. So when you look at that, it's roughly 15%, and that is generally the basis for the OPR guidance. In terms of mitigating VMT, there are a few options available. And the most effective options are going to be those that occur on a regional level or involve changes to the built environment. On the other hand, the most common mitigation actions tend to be transportation demand management actions, or TDM. So TDM would include items such as new employers running shuttles, providing transit benefits, or other kind of programmatic measures that really rely on your employers and your tenants, for the most part. There's more limited means to apply those to, say, residential development or non-office development. And we would typically want to see some monitoring to make sure that it is maintaining its effectiveness in the long run. What can be more effective is really looking at the built environment, which is what is the proximity of transit? How much density is there in an area? What is the mix of land uses? Those are going to be more likely to reduce your VMT. But if you have a project on a given parcel, those are also not really in the area of things that an individual project can affect. Finally, there's been a lot of talk about some regional approaches to VMT mitigation. So this would be through some sort of VMT impact fee, which could help fund VMT reduction measures offsite, or through VMT banks or exchanges whereby development in areas with higher VMT could potentially partner with development in areas with inherently lower VMT to figure out how best to bank those mitigations and reach an overall mitigation goal on a regional level. That hinges on the fact that much of the threshold is based on a greenhouse gas target, which is a global issue and not localized. And finally, as we mentioned briefly earlier, while this does remove vehicle level of service and some other kind of multimodal transportation analyses from the SEQA process, it doesn't change any of the standards set forth in the Cupertino general plan. So the standards for level of service, the standards and requests to set goals for multimodal performance targets, looking at potentially protected intersections, all of those are still there. However, those analysis related to them would likely occur outside of the SEQA process moving forward. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dan to talk through our draft recommendations and what has been presented in the white paper.
Could I just interrupt for a minute? Could you just back up two slides to the... There you go, yes. I just want to see that. Stevens Creek, DeAnza, Stevens Creek, Stelling, DeAnza, and Bolinger. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Dan, are you ready?
All right, good evening. So in this transition to part two of this presentation, I'm going to present the questions and the initial draft recommendations for the VMT decisions and for the multimodal level of service approaches. So we'll go to the next slide. And Chris made reference to a matrix, which is about five pages in the white paper. This is the shorthand version of the white paper that highlights the questions, some key aspects of the common options, limitations, and considerations. What I'm going to focus on in the slide deck is actually going to be on the far-right column, specifically talking about the recommendations. The first two, the metrics and methods, are very technical recommendations. And then the following ones around thresholds and mitigations. Those will be ones that we are highlighting to focus city council on. But certainly, if you have questions on any of the metrics or methods, we're happy to talk about those. So for the next slide, the metrics that we are suggesting be included are essentially five different metrics. This allows for different types of VMT analysis to be done. For a baseline VMT screening process, you would use the home-based VMT per resident or the home-based work VMT per employee, the two in the middle. For projects that don't screen out or need additional VMT analysis, there's likely a need to do the total project-generated VMT as an absolute value, or the total project-generated VMT per service population, and the boundary VMT. So the recommendation is to make all of these available so that the various analyses can be done. For the next question, we're focused on the actual method of calculating VMT. And it really depends on the project, which method would be used. So we're highlighting several options here. The first is for larger projects in the city that may... The VTA travel model would be sensitive to, that we would use the VTA travel model. But for smaller projects, small, medium-sized projects, maybe all that's needed is to use the VTA VMT evaluation tool for screening of residential and office projects. If a project doesn't screen out, but it is still relatively small, then perhaps there would be a need to do a non-model VMT accounting method that's valid to local conditions. So those are the metrics and the methods. Now I'm going to transition to thresholds. And one of the first questions is the use of VMT impact screening. And really, this is for projects that maybe don't need much in the way of VMT analysis. Some examples would include, for screening, would include small developments, projects located in low VMT areas. If a project generated is located in a low VMT area, then it would likely take on similar characteristics of generating a low amount of VMT and help the city to reduce its VMT. The next two are actually screening criteria that are in the state statutory law, proximity to transit and affordable housing projects. So these are two that, of the options presented here, have a little bit of extra weight because they are in the SEQA statutory law. The last one, in terms of land use projects for screening purposes, can be local serving retail. You can think of adding retail into a neighborhood can help to reduce existing trips from traveling to other neighborhoods for retail. So that's the concept behind local serving. Typically, it's a retail of 50,000 square feet, maybe 10,000 square feet. It varies by community. Transportation projects, there are certain projects by their definition could be VMT reduction projects. The addition of bicycle facilities are an example. So there's a number of different project types that we can list out. OPR actually has a pretty long list of projects that would not have a growth-inducing VMT characteristic because they don't increase vehicle capacity. So then the next slide is for, this is kind of the heart of the presentation, if you will. It is to talk about the thresholds for baseline condition and cumulative conditions for land use plans and projects, as well as for transportation projects, and then also VMT mitigation approach. The thresholds and mitigation are actually very closely related. So I want to take just a moment and show that relationship between a VMT reduction, how it might change VMT on the roadway system, and the amount of mitigation that would be needed. So on the next slide, we're showing, on the left side, is the project-generated VMT rate. So the range of possible options are to establish a reduction rate of no change. Future development would generate VMT at a similar rate as existing. That would be a 0% reduction. If that occurs, or if that's the threshold, there would be continued growth of VMT generated by the city of Cupertino, which means additional VMT on your local streets. But as you take a reduction in the generation rate, you would see less and less VMT generated by Cupertino and less VMT on the roadway system. So there are scenarios that would reduce, the VMT generation rate can be reduced such that there's no growth in VMT generated by Cupertino, or maybe even a reduction. So that's the first kind of connection I wanted to make between the rate and what it means in terms of absolute VMT that would be generated by Cupertino. The other part that I wanted to present before jumping into the thresholds and mitigation approach is the mitigation actions. So as you reduce, on the next slide, the... As you reduce the VMT on your roadway system, you'll need to implement VMT mitigation actions that result in greater amounts of reduction. Seems pretty obvious to state, but what would that look like? If we look at the first row, the continued VMT growth, that would have a 0% reduction. Perhaps the VMT reductions or mitigation approach may only need to apply to future development. It could take the form of things that you're familiar with, of applying transportation demand management requirements to new office development, having site access and circulation components to that office development, and perhaps being located near existing or future transit service. But as you progress in terms of reducing VMT, excuse me, the amount of reduction would need to increase. And that would mean considering reductions that apply to existing VMT as well, both that's generated in the city and within the region. What might that look like? For VMT mitigation actions, the transportation demand management strategies can be expanded through a transportation management association to deliver transportation services like Community Shuttle that serves Cupertino and other communities. Your site design could take the form of enhancing your entire bicycle network. The regional transportation policies can take the form of land use changes, locating most growth along transit corridors, for example, or enhancing transit services, amongst other strategies. The point here is that as you progress in the amount of reduction, the scope of what those mitigation measures would need to apply to would increase. So on the next slide, we'll start to focus specifically on the thresholds. And here, we're going to present several VMT metrics. And so in the top part, you see a quote. And that quote includes three key components of a threshold. First, it's the VMT metric. In this case, we're highlighting the total VMT per service population. The second component of the threshold is the percent reduction. We're highlighting the 14.3, but there are other options, 25%, and the to-be-determined X%. The third component of a VMT threshold is what is that percent reduction applied to? In this case, we're highlighting the county, but certainly you can consider the city or region. So the first recommendation is a VMT reduction threshold for total VMT per service population of 14.3% from the county baseline. So that would be the, in the middle bar on the left, under 2015, the green bar, it would be the solid gray line. So by establishing that threshold, we can look at existing conditions in the city of Cupertino, which is in the black bar. It generates more VMT than that threshold. That's an important observation for both existing and for future or cumulative impact analysis. By locating land development in Cupertino, you're likely to generate VMT at a higher rate than your threshold, potentially lead to a significant impact under baseline conditions and under cumulative conditions. The good thing about the trends that we see under total VMT per service population is that when we look at 2040, same geographic area, same metric, the VMT generation rates are headed downwards. That's an important observation that I'll spend a little bit more time in a moment when I talk about the cumulative impact threshold. The next performance metric, same components, different VMT metric, and different values. Home-based VMT per resident in this slide would be the VMT that's generated by a household or one home. The threshold that's being suggested is a 16.8% reduction from the county average. What we can see when we look at the city, county, and region on the left for baseline conditions is the generation rate's about the same. So the threshold would be about the same if we picked a different location. Also, the VMT generation rates are downward for the home-based VMT per resident. So that's really helpful when considering baseline screening criteria. The next threshold is for home-based work VMT per employee. So this would be different performance metric, VMT metric, the home-based work VMT metric, same percentage, 16.8% at the same geographic baseline county. So the threshold would be set at the dash line in the middle bar on 2015. Yep, so right there. What's different about the home-based work is that there is actually a slight upward trend in the VMT generation rate. So that means that over time, residents that work or have a commute trip in Cupertino would likely have an increase in their VMT. So now I'm going to switch to another VMT metric. So the fourth one, this one is the total boundary VMT. So as you recall earlier, Teresa had graphics on the left. There was the total project generated VMT, which was the red arrows. Now I'm switching to the right side of that graphic, talking about the boundary VMT, the amount of VMT on the roadway system, in this case, in the city of Cupertino. What we see is that over time, there will actually be an increase in amount of VMT on city and freeways. The city streets and freeways in Cupertino, about a 15% increase. As you'll recall in this, the carb scenario that Teresa presented, there's a growth of allowed of about 6.5%. So we're showing just on city within the city sphere of influence. What is the change in VMT? That's the solid line from left to right, it's increasing. If we were to limit it to just the growth amount, it would be at 6.5%. So now what I wanted to do was go through the questions and highlight what the thresholds would look like. Now there's still a little bit generic because we're talking about several different VMT rates, but I'm highlighting again the key aspects of what we would include in a threshold. And for a land use project, so this is a project that a discretionary action is taken that would allow the development to occur in the city of Cupertino. We would look at a project impact criteria that takes a VMT rate, a specific reduction at the county baseline VMT. So the the test here is simply if we're looking at the total project generated VMT per service population, the reduction of 14.3% from the county baseline would be one example. If the project shows that its rate is higher, then there would be a potential impact. If it shows that it's lower, then there wouldn't be. The other component that I mentioned a little while ago was the project's effect on VMT. This is using the boundary VMT. What we're looking at is what is the potential increase for the project? This is a test of not only the amount of VMT that's being generated by the project, but also the amount of VMT that's being redistributed by the project or reassigned. Projects can be big enough that they can push traffic around. The test here is to see, is there a net increase in VMT on the roadway system or a net decrease? So on the next slide, we're focused on land use plans. Now this has the same component as project generated for the the impact criteria, but land use plans also have a longer time horizon, right? So you can think of your general plan or a specific plan. So we've actually focused most of the significance criteria under cumulative conditions. But this under land use plans would have the same criteria as a project. Same significance impact criteria as a project would. So we go to the next slide. Now we're switching to cumulative conditions. This is taking, we're now looking into 2040, for example, and what we're we're evaluating is a what is the difference in VMT on the county roadway system under cumulative no project and cumulative project conditions? If there's an increase in VMT, then there would be a cumulatively considerable impact. The project would have some effect on the cumulative change in VMT on the roadway system. So that would occur for land use projects and land use plans, which is on the next slide. For transportation projects, we're focused most transportation projects that the city would lead would be of a relatively small scale. What we're focused on for the significance criteria is would there be an increase in VMT caused by that transportation project at the citywide scale? So this could be something like a bike lane, for example, or, you know, a small roadway improvement. We would look both under baseline and cumulative conditions to see if there is a net change in the VMT on the roadway system. And then on the next slide, is mitigation. And so this is kind of bringing together those initial remarks that I made as I presented on thresholds. As you consider your threshold, the there's different groups of VMT mitigation actions. And as I mentioned earlier, there's this transportation demand management with the Transportation Management Association. So this is taking transportation demand management and scaling it to a community level. Site design can take the form of projects that, you know, are specific to a site for small projects, but also to community-wide improvements. For say, for example, your bicycle network or changes in parking policies or parking pricing. Regional policies really take on several groups, location efficiency, where you put the land development, both in Cupertino, but also nearby. Since we know that there's a lot of travel that your residents take outside of the city of Cupertino, bringing development closer to to Cupertino can be a good thing from a VMT generation perspective. Regional land use policies that focus or center around transit, for example, you know, and regional transportation infrastructure that offer options other than driving by a vehicle. And then finally, another level that could be considered is emerging VMT mitigation programs. Teresa mentioned several of them. VMT fee bank and exchange, but another one else also a vehicle or VMT cap. So very similar to the idea of a trip cap, but it would be using vehicle miles traveled. And then on the the last portion of this, I wanted to highlight several different multimodal performance options because as Teresa highlighted, your general plan says we'll consider and adopt VMT thresholds and at that same time, consider your multimodal policy. And so we wanted to highlight several possible options for your consideration. One is what's already in your your general plan, a tiered vehicle level of service that's focused during your peak hour conditions that you're familiar with. It focuses on automobiles and transit primarily. A tiered vehicle level service could mean a citywide level service policy in specific locations have a different lower threshold. You actually have an example of that in your current statement. There's not a lot of difference between the two thresholds, but there is still a tiered level service. Another is person delay. And this is something that would be a, it's essentially a peak hour performance metric that looks at the person delay by mode of travel. So for automobile, for transit, for bike and for walking, you would have different delays. Can provide a lot of really good information, really interesting information, but also is a lot more effort. Layered networks is another possible performance measure. Now, what this would mean would be you already have a statement in your general plan about your circulation element where you state, you know, specific functions for your arterials and minor arterials and collectors. And you also have an expression of the mode priority. This would be reviewing or refining what that mode priority is for your different transportation or for your different streets in in the city. Perhaps some are more emphasized for vehicles, but maybe even more primarily focused on bike pit, transit and less on vehicles. And then the fourth option is a level of traffic stress. This is essentially looking kind of at a citywide behavior, but primarily focused on bicycles. This is a performance measure that's already in your bicycle plan. A form of it is. And what it's quantifying is for the amount of volume of traffic and speed of that traffic, you know, how comfortable would a cyclist be in those conditions? And you want to ultimately optimize where cyclists are that they're mostly comfortable in their travel. So those are four possible options. And so the final question is, you know, of those four options, which ones, which one would the city council like us to spend more time looking on, looking at? So that concludes our our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have. And what we're looking for is input on your thoughts, reactions, direction for each of these questions.
All right, before we go back to the council, there is one hand raised from the public. So if I can go to that, it's Galaxy Tab A Jenny. Now there's two hands. Okay. Whoever, I presume this is Jennifer Griffin?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, you all are doing a public comment now. Thank you to staff for a very enlightening discussion on this. I am fully fully fluent in LOS. I have you, I have been to many, many meetings in other cities where LOS was used. LOS was used to plan the Apple Two campus. It was by us and other cities for very, very large projects. I find the vehicles mile traveled to be extremely ponderous. It's very, very complicated. I feel that the public won't understand it. I just sent all of the city council members emails that I sent to the planning commission on September 22nd, when they had the study session about LOS versus VMT. I'm going to read one of them. Dear Planning Commission City Council, LOS has been used successfully in the past to plan projects in Cupertino and Santa Clara and other cities. The LOS was included in the 700-page draft EIR in one project in Santa Clara, and those are those two high-tech buildings that are going in where IHOP was. I read that, I read that entire EIR two days before the Santa Clara meeting. It was all LOS. I understood everything completely. I am very worried that the intent to remove LOS is a tool in another attempt to suppress local control in cities by entities who are promoting the big housing bills. And I will single out Senator Scott Wiener and his big housing bill. I am very concerned when tools residents and cities have been using successfully for years are suddenly taken away. This smacks of the issues with elimination of local control for cities and neighborhoods by the writers of the big housing bills. I am wondering why SB 743 was written in the first place in 2013 and why it is being implemented now when the big housing bills are being rolled out in Sacramento? I also added a note that I am firmly convinced now that Governor Brown eliminated the redevelopment agencies to set up in preparation for Senator Weiner's big housing bills. I believe that as of today. Please do not take LOS away. I think that it is an excellent, it worked for the Apple Two campus. And I can tell you that all of our intersections at my end of town in Cupertino, we know when they go from level B to level D to level F. And I don't, I don't ride a bicycle. I am very, very considerate of people who do. But I take, I feel like I'm being singled out as someone who, a poor person who can't ride a bicycle. I like to, that's what I like the LOS. It's looking at cars. I ride in a car. I think we need to be sensitive to that, but I have great consideration. I have relatives and friends who do ride bicycles. But I find LOS of VMT to be extremely non-helpful to me in my understanding. And I do not want LOS removed. I think it's a tool from Sacramento to
Okay, Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Kitty Moore. Welcome Kitty.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. So I'm Kitty Moore. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. We had this presentation on September 22nd. However, it did not include the October 26, 177, some odd page, a white paper report. So I'm representing myself only. However, I I would ask that this item return to the Planning Commission and that we are requested to make recommendations for the policy and that we receive the whole presentation that that you've had so that we can actually be more more useful with our with our comments to you because we didn't have all the information. So that's my request that we have this item returned to the Planning Commission and we get to see all the information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Kitty. That is all the public that wishes to speak. So now we will bring it back to the city council. So I have three questions. I'll go first, if that's okay. So you mentioned mass transit is being one of the mitigation measures to reduce VMT. What we're facing in Santa Clara County now is the gradual reduction in mass transit. So, you know, even though it's not, you know, really the city's fault that they're reducing the level of mass transit, that is going to make it more difficult for us to meet the VMT requirements. And I'll do all my questions. The second question, how does the reduction in commuting caused by increased remote working and the MTC goal of 60% remote working affect VMT? If this goal is achieved, have we already met our VMT reduction goals? And the third question is kind of related to what we've done in Cupertino in relation to development approvals. We've been very reluctant to approve new commercial office development because we don't want to worsen our jobs housing ratio. But we've approved a lot of new housing. And so this means we've got more people traveling outside of Cupertino to work. So, you know, should we be adding more commercial office in an effort to reduce VMT with the hope that more of our residents would actually work in the same city? So those were my three questions. If you would like to address them, thank you.
Sure, I can take the lead on that. So your first question was about VMT mitigation specifically around transit.
Right, and the reductions that VTA has been planning. Well, they've already made reductions, but they're planning even more.
Yep. Yes, so that is definitely the case that's occurring right now. Part of that is due to the pandemic, but part of that's also an ongoing trend that's been occurring, right? For transit use in Santa Clara County and actually across the nation. So the VMT mitigation or the VMT trends that we're showing in the values that I presented for the thresholds, particularly under cumulative conditions, takes into account what's already being planned. Even with what's already being planned, Cupertino would still have a higher VMT generation rate. So transit would be one possibility for reductions. There could be a number of other things that would be, could be paired with transit. Or maybe it's even focused more on the cost of travel. So express lanes, for example, could be another way of reducing VMT. So the concept is, you know, consider what's in the toolbox that you have transit and and a number of the regional transportation solutions and consider what's ultimately effective, right? But for mitigation, you have to be able to show that there's a rule of additionality that you can actually reduce VMT and it stays reduced.
Yeah, then we move on to the whole remote working in the 60%. You know, I know San Jose and San Francisco are vehemently opposed to that idea, but other cities are not.
Yeah, and I I probably should have given the caveat that the VMT values that we're showing both 2015 and 2040 are 2015 and 2040 are assuming kind of before and long after the pandemic, right? So they're reflective of the conditions that we had before. So a remote working condition that shows a permanent change in travel could be a mitigation measure. We know that that can reduce the work trip, but it also could cause an increase in travel for other reasons, which you can probably relate to now, given we're already in that kind of condition. If you're not work, traveling for work, you might travel for other reasons, for social recreation and that sort of thing. So that's not built into the thresholds at the moment, but it could be something that, that the city could consider.
And then the, the third one is, you know, should we be switching our emphasis to be approving more commercial office? We've been hesitant to do that.
Yeah, I think it's a possibility. You know, it really would depend on what would happen with the VMT, right? You know, the city is generating VMT at a greater rate than the county. But when you look at the home-based work and you look at the home-based VMT, those seem to be in line or relatively close to in line. So part of the reason for the VMT rate being higher, the overall rate, is for things other than, than just the work trip. So I think adding some work could be good, but it seems to be that there's something else also occurring in Cupertino. And so it might be other kind of social recreation land uses more in Cupertino that could help to reduce VMT.
Right. Well, what about like, there's parents driving their kids to school, is that considered?
Yes, that's captured in the VMT.
It's going to be getting worse now if they proceed with the plans to close several of the schools. So now all of a sudden, people are driving a lot more to fur, further out.
So those are the kinds of activities that could be causing that higher overall VMT generation rate. And so the ways to address those, particularly like around schools, you know, is finding ways for walking and biking, carpooling, you know, those sorts of things.
All right. So we have 22 minutes left, so let the other four council members speak. Did anyone have their hand raised? Let's see. Leon, why don't you go?
I mean, okay. Hi. So how exactly is VMT calc, VMT calculated? How did you know there is something in Cupertino that's not accounted for? And also, I've read a few reports of vehicle trips. In all the report, the trips to work is, accounts to only 20% of all trips. There are, I don't remember off the top, there are 20% of it's business-to-business travel. People go to work and then visit customers. 20% are for errands, 20% are like, hmm, something. I think, so do you count all the different type of trips? How do you count it?
Yes, we do account for all the trips that are occurring in the city of Cupertino. So that takes the form of what you just mentioned, the commute trip, and 20% for the amount of trips, the vehicle trips, not VMT, the vehicle trips is about 20%. There's another group, which I'll just call the home-based trips. So these are the trips that are coming to and from your resident. They're going, some are going to work, some are going to, to social recreation activities, some are going to grocery stores, schools, that sort of thing. And that can represent, you know, about 60% of the trips. And then there's what's referred to as kind of the non-home-based trip. This is the, it's essentially the catch-all in a trip-based model like this. And it's the trip that would be, say, from school to work. So it's that you, you may be dropping your student off, you start from home, you go to, you go to school. That's called a home-based school trip. And then school to work would be a non-home-based trip. And we do have a graphical representation, if that would be helpful for that. But what I was observing and sharing was that there is that kind of non-home-based component of different travel that the model has a little bit of a challenge capturing the full story on.
Yeah, I remember there were also like 20% is business trips people take to visit customers. Those are usually not taken into account. But then how do you know how many people are taking those trips for how long? For each trip, if we are counting miles traveled, how do you calculate? How do you know even people take, how far is, is it from their doctors to their bank to hairdressers? How do you know that?
Yeah. So, I mean, we're getting into the very details of a travel model, but I'll say just there's a couple of features that a travel model has. It's for all aggregate travel behavior, right? So it kind of rolls up all those little details that you mentioned into just the averages. And what we're looking at is assigning the weight of proximity, how close your, your house is to work, right? So the.
Where I go to work, where I go see my doctor, where I take all the trips, I can understand. How would you be able to know all this about all the people? Level of service is very easy to understand because it's just how much delay at each traffic light, how much you wait. It's much easier to understand. No wonder people say that's something they can understand. The vehicle miles traveled. Yes, it's ideally you can average count all that, but how do you actually count to the way you can really tell where people went unless you have a tracker on me? Do you have a tracker on me?
No, we don't.
Then how, how, how are these calculated? So it's all.
Not yet.
All assumption. So it's all assumption they might not be accurate, and we are trying to regulate something based on huge assumptions, right?
We're basing them on average travel behavior. And the basic concept is that the closer you are to an attraction that you want to go to, the more likely you are to go to that direct attraction. So that's the primary kind of component in a travel model. So that's, you know, on average, that's what's happening for each person.
Yes.
That's one of the basis.
But the, for example, for Cupertino, the travel model for Cupertino will be very big different because we have a lot of families with kids. Their travel model will be very different from another city, which probably doesn't have that many family-based business. And then so if you are using a general model that applies to all the cities, your model is going to be wrong, right?
Well, the checks that we did and the observed data that we have, we were comfortable with what the model was telling us and what that observed data was telling us.
Let me ask, are you using the same model for every city?
For most cities, we are using the VTA travel model, yes.
So you are using the same model for every city regardless of their demographics and their, 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 their occupation of, of, of the residents, right?
We are using the, the same model that has the same kind of profiles about, uh, travel. We have different information used for each city that's based off the local conditions. So the housing or the kind of household demographics you're describing, we are capturing that in the model.
Okay, great to know. Sorry, last, last point. Even if we have, sorry, even if we have office that's close to Cupertino, I have calculated though, even if normally usually 20% of people who live in Cupertino, working Cupertino, 20% of workers who work in Cupertino actually live in Cupertino. So even if you have an office right in Cupertino, 80% of the workers are going to come from elsewhere. 80% of the, so, so that doesn't really reduce VMT for Cupertino because you'll be attracting more VMT to Cupertino. How does that work? You might be really reducing only that 20% of people who actually will find a job there unless you have incentive for them to hire Cupertino residents.
Okay, let him answer, and then we need to move to the next person.
Yeah, I think there's, I mean, you'd have to do the tests of adding additional employment in Cupertino to see what does that do to overall VMT. There's potentially some benefit to more employment in Cupertino, but there's also a point when there can be too much. And that has a, you know, an, an adverse effect on the amount of VMT and ultimately the environment.
John, go ahead.
Am I unmuted?
You are, go. We hear you.
Great. So I'll start off by saying, you know, I think in theory, the reduction in greenhouse gases is, you know, hugely important. And, okay, that's the impetus behind this. So, okay, great. I'm still very concerned about the community congestion aspect. And so I, I do think we still need to have the level of service calculated. I'm, I'm going to bounce around a little bit here, trying to make it the most efficient. So currently, the traffic manual is used to generate or to calculate how many trips are generated by a project, how many housing units, how many square feet of retail, how many square feet of office. I, I assume there is no other way to generate the number of vehicle trips, which would then be used to determine the vehicle miles trip, uh, travel. Can you tell me if there is some other way to determine vehicle miles traveled without knowing the number of vehicles that are coming out of a development, both existing and new project?
Yeah, to calculate VMT, you need to know the number of vehicle trips, and you need to know how far they're traveling.
Great. So that being said, so we still have this data that's generated, whether or not we use it to actually do the level of service calculation. But it's still, you know, there being used for a different purpose. And I think when we talked about this in the city, it was determined that we can still require projects to have to compute the level of service so that our community can see what the impact is. Maybe our planners can comment. Am I correct that in a project, we can still require the level of service?
So, what did I respond to that? So we can, we can continue to use level of service as a community, as a tool.
Great.
However, there is one, one point is that VMT is now the de facto metric in CEQA so that our use of level of service now requires environmental review under CEQA. So we can't continue the same way we have in the past.
Okay. But we're still able to communicate with the community that the delays at Stevens Creek and Deansa Boulevard is going to get worse or get better. And so to me, that's important. So next point I'd like to make is, you know, we have a planning commission. I would really have liked three to five slides with the planning commission's analysis and recommendation to us. When, when we see this presentation and we're now going to give direction, where is the planning commission? I'm, I'm happy that our planning commission chair spoke to remind us that they are an important integral part, and they're kind of being left out. I hope that when this comes to us again, as I hope other projects that come to us, whatever commission is responsible for those types of activities, that we are listening to them because they're focused on that, whereas we're global, all items of the city, whether it's library expansion or Lehigh. So again, I, I really want to stress that we need to, I feel, my one-fifth vote is that we need to be leveraging our commissions and having them give us their, uh, analysis and recommendations. Okay, that being said, so what we're supposed to do tonight is, you know, kind of give some direction on how to move forward with threshold and mitigation. And while the presentation was very extensive, it's, it's also not for the faint of heart. It's not for the, the non-technical in that sphere. We're all very technical, but not in that sphere. So for us to make a decision on which metric to use, I, I think that really needs to be brought down one more level, and that is, give us a couple examples. Take a project that's going to add, you know, say 200 housing units or a, and a different project that's going to add maybe 100,000 square feet of retail, and then say, okay, if you use this metric, this is what would be the outcome. If you use this metric, if you use this metric. Based on that, we can then determine, okay, which metric do we want to be using, which one makes the most sense for our community, and what is the threshold? Of course, without more knowledge, I'd say greenhouse gas, hugely important, let's go with the most aggressive. But what does that mean? How is that going to impact a development that may be a, a housing development versus an office development? Maybe we want to be very aggressive with the office development and push for TDM versus a housing development where we're trying to get the maximum amount of affordable housing. And from what we have tonight, great presentation, great wake-up on all this, but now to actually bring it down to where the rubber hits the road, that's what I would really like to see when you bring this back to us. I would hope that the planning commission shares that type of thinking and actually asks those specific types of, of questions so that then we can digest it and make the, the right decision for the community. One last question.
All right, hurry up because we're almost out of time.
Yeah, one last question. When does this actually go into effect? You know, it was approved in 2013. At what point is a project going to be judged with this vehicle miles traveled versus our current level of service alone? When would that take effect?
That went into effect already in July, 2020, last July. So if projects come in now that they require VMT analysis, and we are able to use ad hoc measures or project-specific measures until we adopt a, a standard for the city.
Okay, so we, so essentially, we need to move fairly rapidly with this then, or we're going to be left. Okay, great. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Rod, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, to that last point, right, if we had active projects underway, we, we would have already had to have tackled this, but I guess we don't. But I guess the importance is before we get our next project of any kind that meets the threshold at which this has to be done, I mean, I guess it call, small and medium are a part of that, right? How small is small? I mean.
Dan, could you respond to that question, the minimum?
Yeah, so that, that would have to be a term that would need some definition at some point in the future.
Is a single-family home? We certainly wouldn't have to do this for a single-family home, would we or not?
Correct. Yeah, so a small may be something like 10,000 square feet of office. That might be the scale, maybe it's 50,000, it's somewhere in that range.
What about a, a 10-unit multifamily housing project?
That, that would likely fit in the small category as well, maybe up to 20 units.
Okay. And then it becomes medium and so forth. So, yeah, it would be important for us to set policy on this before we get applications and start getting in any contentious relationship with those who, who say, hey, you know, you didn't have a rule. who say, hey, you know, you didn't have a rule in place at the time I filed, I guess, right? That's the general idea here. Yes?
We are able to to set project-specific V M T thresholds, um but of course, it would be better to do a community-wide one as soon as possible, so that it applies across the board.
Okay, all right.
May I just add that it only applies to projects subject to CEQA?
What? Only projects?
It only applies subject to CEQA, yeah.
Ah, okay, so if we have to approve a project ministerially, like an S B thirty-five project, there's no V M T calculation mandated anyplace. We wouldn't do it. We couldn't charge a developer to do it or anything, right?
Unless there's a standard condition of approval that the city has, that's an objective standard.
Okay, so we could still require it as an objective standard, but those things that are mandated to be part of CEQA wouldn't be done because it doesn't go, those don't go through CEQA. Yeah, so I I mean, honestly, right, this is very technical and um I I am sure that uh that, you know, I I don't have any specific guidance other than, yeah, like others here, I support the the concept of of using this tool to to help us fight what is uh maybe the defining issue of our time, which is uh, you know, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. We are all impacted by wildfires and and loss of um of of uh water, right? And we we are drying out and and we need to do everything we prudently can to uh fight climate change. So I'm I'm on board for us to be using this uh state policy to help us. We don't actually have a lot of control over uh transportation. Um and this is one specific way where we we do have influence um based on the projects that come in. Do the models include the new RENA allocation we have of six thousand two hundred and twenty homes? I mean, when you're using this indirect uh measure, not not to specific projects and all, and and all the other development that's gonna be done in the region?
Yeah, so it, the assumptions for twenty forty would have been prior to those RENA allocations. So it would have been the previous RENA allocation that you would have had.
Okay, and when do we have to start taking into account the new one? Is that twenty twenty-two or something such? I'm just interested in the timing on when the new, you know, some new numbers kick into this model. And I would assume that if we build a lot more housing here, we may actually do better on V M T. Any comment?
Yeah, so I think the city staff can speak to the the timing for your RENA. Um but it would be in several years that those numbers would be integrated into a V M T, future V M T projection.
I don't have an exact date, but I can, I can get that information, Jerry.
Very. These are questions that cross my mind, but I probably won't be sitting in this seat the next time you come back. So uh I will commend this to my my colleagues, uh my future colleagues, uh or future council members to to think through these questions. Thank you so much.
Council member sings, this um David Stillman, Transportation Manager. I'm being told by planning that December twenty twenty-two is the date for that.
Thank you very much. R C, did you have anything?
Uh I I I do, but we're one minute away from our scheduled start time.
Well, it's okay. If we go over a few minutes, it's fine.
Um, okay, I'll I'll start with my recommendation. I think we should send this back to planning as well as Bike Pet Commission because uh they both have some useful inputs that they give us. I think they should look at potential objective standards. Um and then uh my questions have to do with level of service. Uh on slide thirty-seven of your presentation, there is uh an allusion to it, and then on seventy of the white paper, uh they talked in a little bit more detail about what level of service would entail right now. Uh my question is, how does tiered level of service differ uh from level of service as we've uh previously conducted it? And um I would, I would request any other references to uh level of service besides uh page seventy of the white paper. So um I take it that it's different somehow uh from the presentation. And uh if I could take a a quick stab at the tiered level of service, it seems like the standards are a little bit different for uh more and more urbanized areas than how we were looking at level of service in a more uh uniform fashion previously. So does anyone care to take that question on? Uh, okay.
Um sure, the uh the the level of service as as it was done before, basically, the the way in that it differs, that the the key way is that if if we took our level of service standards that we have today and said, okay, we just wanna apply those same standards in the future, that wouldn't work because we would have to study their via, the the V M T impacts on those. So when we decide how we use level of service in the future, we have to be aware that sometimes reducing um the or increasing the capacity at an intersection could have a negative impact on V M T. So that's, that's the key piece that's that's different. I don't know if I answered your question, Dan.
Yeah, I mean, you kind of answered the question. I I think, I think this is just sort of a point of, I I don't know whether it's sort of like deliberate obfuscation. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're you're conducting it, but I mean, I just feel like we did have a prior method that we've used for a while and that the public is used to. I mean, could there at least be a transitional period where there's a correlative understanding of what a level of service um grade looks like compared to V M T? And and, you know, if if we're really trying to uh conduct a transition instead of like this very sudden difference, let's try to utilize our our general plan so that uh public can, you know, ha- have a sense of comfort as to how this correlates to the new methodology. Um and then, you know, in the interest of time, I I'll just, I'll just put forward my questions because my recommendation is to uh take it back to the commissions. I hope it's done in a timely way. But my 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 with uh validation and all um site, white paper, page twenty-six. Uh the second bullet point there says, quote, "Project-level travel forecasts should be validated following the guidelines of the Travel Model Validation and Reasonableness Checking Manual, uh second edition from the Federal Highway Administration." So um I take it that that validation actually entails observation of actual uh travel and movement. I I just, I I think it would give everyone a a much greater sense of comfort if that was actually the case. Listening to the presentation and the comments today, it did sound like the validation, um, you know, uh specifically entailed that kind of observation. And I would just ask for a little bit more detail as to how that's conducted so that we can get kind of a sense um following up on Councilmember Chow's questions or at least relating to them, um, you know, how that, how that calculation or set of calculations are are done. So those will just be my my comments in the form of questions. And uh again, I hope that we do, you know, can, I we do send it back to um Bike Pet and Planning. My recommendation would be to have a joint meeting, um try to do this efficiently. Um so thanks very much.
All right, so it, yeah, we are four minutes past due for our regular meeting. So let's adjourn the special meeting and uh move on to the regular meeting. So Madam City Clerk, can you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Chow.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sinks.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Here.
Mayor Sharp.
Here.
Okay, the first item of business, uh item one, certificates of appreciation to volunteers at the Silicon Valley Korean School. I do have a long packet of um certificates. Madam City Clerk, do you have just the names? Uh so I don't have to scroll through everything or what? Wonderful. Okay, so I'll just read the first uh certificate and then read all the names. So this is certificate of appreciation in recognition of your service to our community, especially your volunteer work at Silicon Valley Korean School. The City of Cupertino thanks you for all your hard work, dedication and commitment, and wishes you the very best in your future endeavors. Sign, Stephen M. Sharp, Mayor. So now I will read the list. Um hopefully, I will not mangle any of the names. Uh Chee Wan Lee, Xiao Yan Jung, Hyun Woo Ho, Christopher Hwan Hui Cho, Jin Yook Kim, Han Ak Kang, Joseph Hong, Yellen Lee, Gina Song, Raymond Gunwoo Kim, Rachel Sebin Kim, Carmen Raylert, Daniel Ko, Yvonne Lee, Michelle Kim, Emily Choi, uh Min Su Jung, Dong Yan Shin, Richard Oh, Jun Ha Huang, Erin Min, Sung Yon Jung, John Su Ha, Yu Min So, Christopher Kim, Eric Cho, Qiu Qiu Biang Chan, Erin Yun, uh Yun Wu Park. Is there, is that it, Madam City Clerk? Great.
Yes.
So thank, thank you to all the volunteers. I do often see you in front of Cupertino High School directing traffic. Uh great job. In fact, my nephew's son goes to Korean school and he's learning a lot. So I really appreciate uh all the work you do. So thank you. Okay, um was there anyone that wanted to speak from the Korean school before we move on? Uh Richard, Richard, oh, there we go, Richard, go ahead.
Um, good evening. My name is Richard Oh, the volunteer team leader at Cupertino High School. Um and also team leader at Silicon Valley Korean School. Now, first of all, I'd like to express my gratitude for the City of Cupertino for presenting the award and allowing me to speak in the city council on behalf of the other students. Our school is currently conducting forty-eight online classes, and one thirty-six high school volunteers are actively helping online. We deeply appreciate that the city recognizes our student volunteers' contribution, and I believe that this year's volunteering will be more active, successful and rewarding than ever before. Ever since I volunteered um at the school in two thousand seventeen, I've obtained many invaluable experiences. And among these rich experiences, there's one particular account that still resonates with me to this day. There was a kid who was part of the sports class for elementary school student that I took charge of. At first, he caused many troubles. For instance, as soon as we finished the roll call, he ran around the field without the permission to leave or suddenly threw shoes towards the sky in the middle of the soccer match. No matter how many times the teacher cautioned him, he simply refused to listen. So I decided not to lecture him as a strict authority figure, but to gradually approach him as an equal friend. And after countless weeks of effort, ultimately, we found a point of connection through American football. As I taught him how to throw, catch, hike and kick the ball, for the first time, he started to pay attention to what I'm saying. Soon, I found him rushing to the class, not rebelling against the teacher, but eager to play catch and talk football with me. While developing a strong bond with him, I was able to help him understand his responsibility as a student and how to exercise self-control. Being able to narrowly witness but actively contribute to the change and the growth of others, I learned the true power of volunteering. That through volunteering, one can indeed change the world, no matter how small of a scale it is. Once again, it is a great honor to receive the award, and I sincerely thank the hard-working school administrators, especially Principal Young So Kim and volunteer teacher Kiso Kim. And last but not least, I appreciate the mayor of Cupertino, Stephen Sharp, for providing me and other volunteers with the opportunity to reflect on the importance of civic engagement. Thank you for listening to the speech.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh let me go back and see, was there anyone else? Uh, no one else wishes to speak on that? So we are on to, um, are there any postponements, Madam City Clerk?
No postponements, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we are on to oral communications. Um so I just, um, I wanted to tell people that um we do have the agenda item where we will be discussing the Cupertino Union School District and um you know, if there's anything the city can do regarding uh the situation there. So you might wanna save those comments for that agenda item. Um and oral communications is for items not on the agenda, and the city council cannot take action on those items since they're not agendized, but they could be put on a future agenda if the mayor or two council members uh so desire. So you have three minutes each to speak. I see three hands raised right now. So we will start with uh Mooney Mahapatla. Welcome, Mooney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Could you guys hear me now?
Can.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So I want to talk about no two items. Uh that's the self-interest to me and, you know, my fellow residents. One, um, there's a lot of misinformation going on in the community by some people that are specifically, you know, associated with a particular developer in trying to misinform residents. This is about, you know, S B thirty-five lawsuit. There are people deliberately, deliberately lying to, you know, the community at large, saying, you know, it costs money, uh our taxpayer dollars for that lawsuit. I know for a fact, you know, sandal properties as reimbursed, and there was an indemnification clause that said, you know, any lawsuit coming out of an S B thirty-five approval, they have to pay for it. And they, in fact, you know, paid for it. There are checks and, you know, to prove it. Nevertheless, there are people, you know, misinforming residents and trying to, you know, misdirect the votes. So two people are explicitly conducting their campaign on this false propaganda. So can the city please put out an announcement saying, you know, here is the cost of, you know, S B thirty-five lawsuit, and here is how how much, you know, the developer paid and all that? That would really help us. So please take steps, you know, to inform the public about, you know, who paid for the S B thirty-five lawsuit and, you know, and how much the city, it cost the city. We need to stop lying to the public. Okay, that's one. Second one, Nextdoor seemed to have instituted a new policy where you can create posts that can span everywhere. Right? There are people, you know, that were taking posts out of context from our city, posting it on, you know, smear blogs previously. Now, they're allowing, you know, these posts to be, you know, seen from anywhere, and they can be, you know, taken and posted anywhere. I'm just really concerned about now residents coming under attack from these M B groups out of town because these people don't have enough support within the community, so they are opening it up, you know, for anybody at large so that now our community can be smeared. Please do something about it. Take steps. Just widen the contract with, you know, city, at least, you know, widen the contract with the Nextdoor because we don't want our residents being attacked from, you know, out-of-town people. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. So um Madam City Manager, for to his first thing, I think we could, I mean, could you put something out regarding the whole expenses or non-expenses of um that S B thirty-five litigation? And the second item, I mean, we don't really have, Nextdoor is a private company. I don't think we have any.
We don't have a con, we don't have a contract with them either, so.
Right.
I wanted to make that correction as well. On the first item, let me explain, I think, what what has happened. There was a P R A, Public Record Act, request that asked for expenses related to the S B thirty-five uh litigation. Then there was a subsequent Public Records Act request requesting the reimbursement amounts. You know, this is a political dispute at this point between candidates, and I would really refrain from the city getting involved in that dispute. But we are, I'm happy to um clarify that at this point, both parties have the information and can send that that information pretty much anywhere. I also refrain from, you know, treating projects and developers unlike each other. And what I mean by that is uh once we post, like if we decide to post everything, it's been suggested we post bills and or reimbursements on the relative webpages of each development. Um that becomes pretty arduous work-wise because we'd have, it's an all-or-nothing ballgame from a city staff perspective to treat um all of them, uh I'll call it equitably instead of equally. So I've been refraining from uh involving the city in that dispute between candidates, and will continue to do so until such time we can provide clarification.
All right, fair enough.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that makes sense. However, I'd like to re-add that what, how, whether it costs city money or not, I don't think it does, but we wouldn't be at the, the citizens wouldn't be pushed to a point where they have to take anything if the previous council had listened. if the previous council had listened back. No, that's not blend residents for rounddoings of the city council. That's...
Okay, Leon, we are not allowed to comment on this. Okay, thank you. Next is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome. You have three minutes.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin and I just wanted to bring up a couple of facts. It has become apparent recently that many Bay Area super PACs, and I'm talking about groups that are pumping money into political bills, et cetera, are getting involved in politics in the state of Oregon. Money that is being used to back and write Senator Weiner's big housing bills. SB fifty is involved also. The same money is being pumped into Oregon and it backed the passage of HB two oh oh one, which allowed four plexes on every suburban lot in Oregon in cities over twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred people. Many, many people in Oregon do not know that that is the law. It was signed last summer by their, a year ago by their governor and it was implemented in January of two thousand twenty. This is the same mechanism of groups of charities, people who are trying to push the big housing bills into the Bay Area and the rest of the state. It's, it's one thing to dictate what's happening in California in the Bay Area, but to get involved in the politics and sovereignty of another state is something we need to look at. I'm sure Oregon does not want, they don't like Californians anyway. I know that. I have relatives up there. But I'm sure that they do not want people in California to be dictating their politics and that is what is happening. Tina Kotek, representative, et cetera, introduced HB two oh oh one. She is in contact with Scotland. We need to be aware of this because it's not just a big mystery. This money is coming out of the Bay Area. We need to be aware of this. And I don't think it's right that these political, these super PACs are dictating democracy in California and Oregon. Why should we, why should they be making the decisions that we, the residents of California, should be making and the residents of Oregon? It's bad enough we have to live through this lie in California, but why are they spreading this to Oregon and to Washington State? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Venkata Ranganathan. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council. My name is Venkata Ranganathan. I've been a Cupertino resident for ten years and I've been living in the Bay Area in Sunnyvale and, as I said earlier than that, for a total of twenty-five, more than twenty-five years here. And this is regarding the Verizon five G small cell site installation. We received the notice sometime early next week that there will be some small site, small five G cell sites installation throughout Cupertino. I tried to contact the contractor's information that was provided in the notice, but I couldn't. Probably later they fixed it, but till last Sunday, Monday, I think, last week, late last week, I couldn't even communicate. I sent an email to the council, the city manager and the city clerk and kindly the city manager responded to my email and she sent me the documents regarding the encroachment permit, permit guidelines. Separately, as a fork of my original email to the city, the contractor that was hired by Verizon also provided and, you know, responded to my email and also sent me a brochure on their, on their installation practices. They were claiming that this is in the same realm as water and power, but I don't think water and power are in the same realm as installing a five G cell, which is a commercial activity. Then in response to that, which I added the city back, was an article from Scientific American, a magazine that has been in existence for one seventy-five years, with great reputation, that had, that basically called out the safety of these five G small cell sites back in two thousand nineteen and called out the... The article talks about how the current standards on, current recommendations are based on a nineteen ninety-six study. The futures, the studies since then have been thwarted by competitive interest. And so what we have, that is the basis of this FCC recommendation, is a nineteen ninety-six study. That Scientific American article, along with the documents I provided from the citizen representations in the Palo Alto Council, talk about several publications with peer-reviewed research that talks about the dangers of this radiation, including a link to sixteen hundred-plus papers by electromagnetic radiation safety, an organization led by Professor Joel Moskowitz at UC Berkeley.
Okay, please finish up your...
Civil and environmental engineering urged a setback of hundred feet and fifteen hundred feet from residences and schools. But I, the current recommendation from the city of Cupertino doesn't, is much shorter than that. I would like the city to reconsider the recommendation it adopted in August twenty twenty and provide a correct setback requirement. I'm little surprised that we are so serious about restricting the use of gas lawn blowers.
You're way over. You need to finish up.
Environmental issue, but we take the small cell site so lightly. We take pride in a resident-focused city council and in dealing with things that...
Sorry, but you're done. I'm gonna have to mute you. Okay, next, we have Aparna Sayana. Welcome. Go ahead. I'm unmuting you, but you need to unmute yourself too. Go ahead. Welcome.
Yeah, okay, this is Aparna and my husband Raj is here too. We wanted to reinforce what Venkata just spoke about the Verizon small cell facilities. The notice that we received from Verizon and definitely we are concerned about the health benefits, health risks that causes to seniors, kids with the small cell facility around the area. There are many articles which we can send. But we'd like to know what is the process to stop Verizon from installing small cell facilities in a residential area? It should be done in a commercial, I mean, area which is zoned for commercial use and not on a street lamp in a residential area where there are little kids and adults and then their extreme health benefits. So if you could please provide us a contact or way to proceed so that we can stop Verizon. They've just given us twenty days, which is too less, very little. So if you could let us know what's the best way to contact and prevent Verizon from installing a small cell tower in the residential area.
Okay, Madam City Manager, can you give them a contact for the staff? But I mean, we, we had this small cell study session one or two meetings ago and we went into this in detail. But...
Yeah, I would ask Aparna to email me so I have her email contact.
Sure.
I can send you some information. My email is debf, D E B F, at Cupertino.org.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so next, Ram, welcome.
Yeah, hello, Council. My name is Ram. I've been living in Cupertino for almost like twenty years now. Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah. So again, this is regarding the small cell installation on McLaughlin Road. I, I mean, I have a similar protest with this. It just seems like too close to residential homes. It's, it's really close and I think the constant radiation probably has its effect on people living there. So I would like to see how to prevent this installation and, you know, at least have it installed in someplace where there is, you know, where there's people constantly not living there and they're not constantly bombarded for, to these radiation. Also, why do we get such little time in responding back? I mean, some decisions are taken and then when it comes to the citizens, there's no time for us to, you know, to even protest or, or, you know, have our, have our opinion voiced. That's about it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And Deb, you can contact Ram as well.
Yes, if I could. Ram, if you want to email me at debf@cupidino.org, I'd be happy to send you the information I have.
Okay, so I don't see any other hands raised.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, you have something to read?
Yes, I have a couple of emails read.
Okay, go, go ahead. I'm gonna time these as well.
Okay, I have an email from Lisa Warren. She also requested that I share my screen, so I'll share it and then I'll scroll through the rest of the slides when I'm done reading.
Okay, I'll start the timer when you start. Okay.
Okay, can you see the email?
Yeah.
Okay. City manager... Okay, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members, please see attached information that has recently been provided as a response to a public records request. I'm requesting that all eight pages be entered into the record for this evening's city council meeting. I'm also requesting that the city clerk read this message and display the accounting pages as well as the five check images. I further request that the same eight pages be posted on the city of Cupertino's website under the Valco SB thirty-five project title. It's been indicated to me that it may not be possible to grant this request. I think it is, it is important for the public to know if this is the case and have confirmation from the city attorney as well as an explanation as to why this information is not website material. The community has continued to be misled by several residents who repeatedly publish erroneous information claiming that the Friends of Cupertino, Friends of Better Cupertino lawsuit and name Kitty Moore filed against the city of Cupertino has resulted in over two hundred and forty thousand dollars of taxpayer money being spent on the lawsuit. Days after all five council candidates were sent the attached fax, I read the same false claims on Facebook page of a current city council candidate. Dollar figure is the misinformation. The dollar figure in this misinformation was even doubled in that posting. This is more than disappointing. These same community members continue to dispute the facts. The attached details and images were provided by the city and should serve to support those who have been saying all along that the city was protected by an indemnification clause written into the development agreement years ago. Regardless of the fact that election day is tomorrow, the information should be readily available on the city's website as soon as possible. If that is legally not doable, a public statement at tonight's meeting should be made with the, with the goal to confirm that the legal fees for the F O B C lawsuit have been reimbursed by Valco Property Owner LLC and the reason why they are reimbursed. This could be done in the city manager's report or by the city attorney. Each of the five current Cupertino city council candidates was provided with the same information on October twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty, directly by staff. Thank you, Lisa Warren. Okay, so I'll just scroll through.
Okay, go ahead. Give one more minute. Okay.
Okay, this is slide two. Slide three. Here are the checks. Slide four. Slide five. Six. Seven. And eight. And, and Lisa also had a follow-on email with further information that will also be included in the written communications under oral communications for this meeting. Okay, my...
Great. You're right, under three minutes. Okay, you have another one?
Yes, so this is from Tim McCray. Dear City Clerk, please enter the following in public comments in tonight's city council meeting. Silicon Valley Leadership Group invites you to join us for our sixteenth annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot to participate in our Sand Hill Property Company Mayor's Cup Challenge. This year, the turkey trot produced by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group Foundation will be virtual for the safety of our community and vulnerable populations. But with so much tremendous need in our valley, community support for our five local beneficiaries is needed more than ever. Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, Second Harvest Food Bank of Santa Cruz County, The Health Trust, Healthier Kids Foundation, and Housing Trust Silicon Valley. Over the past fifteen years, we have donated nine point six million dollars to our community and this year, we hope to surpass ten million. Your involvement can get us there. As you know from past years, our Mayor's Cup rewards mayors, council members, and city managers who register for our race. We encourage you to compete in the mid-sized city mayor's cup competition, Beat Mountain View. This year, points will be also awarded for turkey trot-related outreach posts in newsletters, e-newsletters, and social media to your constituents. Points are also available if you would like to champion these efforts on behalf of your council. I will leave behind our points scoring sheet for further reference. Thanks again for your packed support for our Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. Please join us on Thanksgiving to show support for your community and to earn that extra slice of pie. Best regards, Tim McCray. And then that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. So now, let me make sure there's nobody else raise their hand during this time.
Well, I raised my hand there. I'll try to be real brief.
No, but this is oral communications.
I know, and this pertains to it.
Okay, well, you can't address anything that a resident raised, though.
No, this is to the city manager. I think we have a responsibility to at least ask Verizon if it's possible to relocate the cells that the residents have asked about. If we don't at least ask, then we have not, you know, tried to do something for the residents. Obviously, Verizon most likely will come back and say, no, it can't be relocated. But I think we owe the residents the thing to at least ask.
So, okay, thank you. But I remind everyone, we cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda. And this whole cell, we had a long study session on small cells recently and, you know, unfortunately, you know, we are bound by, you know, the federal regulations.
But we are allowed to direct staff to respond.
Right, and we did.
Yeah.
I'm asking for staff to ask Verizon if they can move those cells. Thank you.
So we haven't asked? I thought we, okay, yeah, I'll follow up later. I think we should.
Okay. So we're on to item two of the city manager update on emergency response efforts. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our current case count is a hundred and fifty-two, that's COVID cases, by zip code and a hundred and fifty-six by city. Essentially, we're up twenty cases since the last time we reported this on October twentieth, which is a little bit worrisome to me. There are still plenty of appointments available this Wednesday, November fourth, from nine thirty to three forty-five at the senior center for free testing. A reminder is that you do not need to be a senior to get tested and this testing is primarily for people who are asymptomatic or people with, people with symptoms should see their care providers. The county is currently in the orange tier. Our case rate is going up and so is our positivity rate. We will be launching a refreshed communication campaign in the next week or so. And the county executive reported we could be on our way back into the red tier in the next couple of weeks. Unfortunately, and that's because of the increased positivity rate and the increased case rate. Our current positivity rate in Cupertino is one point two. So the county executive also reported that the best-case scenario for first responders to receive the vaccine is the end of the month in March of two thousand twenty-one. Likewise, he said the best-case scenario for a vaccine to be available to the general public would be the end of fall two thousand twenty-one, so about a year from now. It's in a two-dose format, so it makes it a bit more difficult to track on who actually has received the vaccine and who has not. We're told, of course, that with only one dose, it would be of minimal impact or effectiveness, if any.
Um, Parks and Recreation, just a little update. We had a really good um Halloween programming, uh, selling out way ahead of time on the actual movie night of October 30th and 31st. We had 67 cars between the two uh evenings. Uh, this included, of course, a spooktacular giveaway in the form of goodie bags. We gave away about 1,500. Again, they were registered for way early in advance. Um, online classes continue to do well as tennis and golf, as I've mentioned in prior updates. Uh, we have, because of the time change, updated the time uh for golf um to accommodate the recent time change and take advantage of the daylight. Um, and the new thing is that the picnic area registration is now open for the 2021 season, and it's starting to book up, believe it or not. A little election update, election security, but election update. In Santa Clara County, 53% of registered voters have voted versus in 2016. We were at 34.84% at this point in the election. However, voting centers continue to be very popular. So as a reminder, uh, Quinlan has been open since October 31st, along with the other voting centers in the county. Uh, much attention has been put towards ensuring people can vote safely, um, and we have not had any incidents at Quinlan. Uh, there will be continued detention um after, uh, well, during the weeks following the um election to ensure that people remain safe in anticipated um civil unrest across the country. So there are plans being made with uh multiple law enforcement agencies across the county. Uh, last week, uh fortunately, Cupertino, the main part of Cupertino, excuse me, was not affected by the P S P S event. Uh, there was a large P S P S event to northeast portion of the county, uh, the Milpitas Hills and north. Um, however, due to the winds changing quite quickly, there were approximately 15 homes in the southwest portion of unincorporated county near Cupertino um that were affected by the P S P S. My update for um the homeless encampments remains somewhat the same. Um, we do have inclement weather coming. As people can tell, we've definitely hit fall. Um, there's been a lot of talk about La Nina hitting this winter, which means that uh winter prediction temperatures will be extremely cold, uh, just like our summer months were extremely hot. Um, from my last update of October 20th, I met with, I have met with multiple agencies, Caltrans, the off, County Office of Supportive Housing, and Abode with very positive coordination meetings. Um, and the city is putting together a project timeline, um, a map as well as other uh documents to help coordinate the very big group of multi-agency, the multi-agency team putting this together. I will share details with the council and interested members of the public once details are more firm. Finally, um, I was requested to provide a small business emergency relief grant program update. Uh, the city has awarded $5,000 grants to 37 small local businesses totaling $185,000 using the CARES Act CBBG-CV funding. Um, it was a, based on uh qualifying eligibility for the dollars uh and chosen by lottery process. I do have a short, well, it's kind of a lengthy list of the 37 Cupertino small businesses um that received our grants and who are very thankful. I can read a couple.
You don't have, you don't have to read the whole list.
Right, I won't. Um, well, I won't read any is what I'll do. Um, but there's 37 of them. Uh, and I think that um they've been very thankful for the assistance.
Thank you. I'd like to hear a couple, you said.
Sure. Um, Ever Smile Dental Care, um, Anna Beauty Salon, Ja J Foods Incorporated, uh, Keith K Kosahura, Kosakura OD or Dental Office. Yoshi Noah, Nash, Yoshi, Yoshi Noya Restaurant, just to name a few. Um, and that's the end of my report.
So I had um one question based on my discussion we had this morning um in our one-on-one. It sounded like there's an advantage to more people getting testing and tur, tested in terms of staying in the current um classification. I guess we're orange now.
Um, yeah.
Can you comment? I mean, we can, you encourage people to get tested if it, if it helps us.
It does help us. So countywide, the target had been since the beginning of the pandemic and the shutdown, approximately 8,000 tests administered a day throughout the county. Um, and so one of the measures that they're measuring us on is our ability to uh get testing. The county executive made a point today that um we do, or Saturday, that we do have capacity in testing, so we're encouraging everyone to get tested. Um, uh, but that's pretty much, he told me, that's pretty much the only metric that is increasing but helping us. And so we want to continue to push that because that is pretty much the only thing keeping us in orange at this point. Um, there, the increase in our case rate and the increase in the pos, likewise positivity rate is just good, you know, he just said one, one super-spreader event in one of our cities is going to send us right back into orange, or right back into red, so.
Right.
Just want everyone to remain vigilant. We are pretty vigilant, but as you can see, compared, relative to Cupertino's uh case rate, um, we're increasing quite a bit too. Uh, so I just want to help everybody refresh their practices of face coverings, physical distancing, and hand washing, or hand sanitizer. And again, we'll have another communication push in this next couple of weeks, new banners and kind of a refresh on um outreach.
Okay, yeah, I think that's important as we approach the holiday season. People are going to get even more
Yes.
lax.
Mm-hmm. And wanting to see family, right? Wanting to see your family and friends.
And I think they also encourage everyone to get a flu shot as well, right?
They do.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deb. So moving on to our report on committee assignments, uh, let's go. Rod, why don't you go first?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so um Stephen and I basically completed our service on the unhoused task force that was conducted by the county. Um, and uh we were able to, thanks to the, the city moving forward uh at the Housing Commission, our 2020 to 2025 community plan to end homelessness, uh able to uh report that, that we were um on target to bring that uh with the Housing Commission's recommendation to council, I believe, in December. Is that correct, Deb?
I.
Approval of that plan?
Yeah.
That's the last thing you wrote. That's what I said, at least. Okay. And, and so um, you know, this task force was really focused around what to do with all the folks um uh who need transitional help, uh rather immediate help. Um, so there's that step, and there's also the permanent supportive housing step that we take. Uh, so we've, we invested a lot of time in frankly drinking from a fire hose to understand uh what is a, a really complex subject with, yeah, many facets and I think we came to, all of us on the task force came to appreciate the, the big challenge of serving a population uh such as we have on uh Wolf Road that we need to, we need to think through how we uh deal with that, and there are both short-term and long-term uh actions that are, are critical. So I thought it was a, a really interesting experience to be on that task force. Uh, with Darcy, I participated in the audit committee and we did, went through a rather routine um review of our short-term investments, which are really in cash uh and very secure investments, and then the, the very long-term uh portfolio that is uh well diversified into equities uh and, and other financial instruments. And um, yeah, I'm, I'm sure both of you can add more on both those subjects, but that's my report in the last nearly two weeks.
Okay, very good. John?
Okay, so uh on the 28th, Valley Water started their um committee uh meetings again, which have been delayed and canceled due to COVID. So it took some catching up. The current budget is at 610 million, and their projects for water uh include enhancing their water supply, working on recycling, uh engaging and educating the communities, and conservation. And they clearly said the conservation is working because the water demands are significantly below what they would have been had we never implemented uh conservation. The big one would be that uh they're in the process of draining Anderson Dam for seismic retrofit. And so it's kind of interesting, they're moving, however they do that, they're moving the water to uh San Luis Reservoir, and they're putting it back in the ground. Interesting. Then the one that might uh be of more interest to a lot of the residents is that they have, in this current budget, $900,000 uh for grants. Grants to uh improve the waterway and watershed cleanups, wildlife habitat restoration, and conservation uh projects, kind of like uh further educating the communities. And so, nice to see that uh we're back on the uh, the map with those. I also attended the roundtable for the uh airport noise. I'll leave that one to Liang since she's the principal and I'm the alternate. Okay.
Oh, okay, is that it? Okay, very good, Liang.
Okay, so on the airport roundtable, um, it's working well with the letters. However, we are facing a situation now, Cities Association would like us to find a new body to um, help house the, the, the committee. And unfortunately, we are like, oh, San Francisco Roundtable is held funded by San Francisco Airport and the San Mateo County. But in our case, San Jose City and San Jose Airport, who are causing all the airport noises, are unwilling to even get involved. And Santa Clara County do have a representative on the committee, but they have been unable to take responsibility by uh being our coordinator or even provide staffing support. So we are um now seeking um a house and an option is to be our own organization. Maybe they were talking about being 501(c), but that will be costly, so I don't think that's likely. So I think we I think the best option for us is to push the county to adopt us. It's their responsibility. All the noises, people who are suffering from the noises are county residents. So how, I hope maybe the city or the council can talk about how do we push our county supervisors to, to really take the airport noise issue, airplane noise issue seriously. Yeah. It's not affecting a whole lot of residents, but whoever is under the flight path is affected significantly.
Okay, is that all?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Darcy, go ahead.
Hmm, thank you. Uh, good news from the Library JPA. We voted to eliminate library fines. So for all those dollars you have racked up in overdue materials, uh, those are going away. The idea is that fines themselves have been pretty regressive um as a general matter, and uh when the Library JPA did the analysis, um, they actually found out that uh a full half of those fines actually go to administrative costs for administering the fine system, so. Um, you know, a, a, at this point, it just makes sense to, um, to, to, to do away with those. Uh, if the materials are lost, however, they'll still need to be repaid. The library system in general has been doing a really good job to keep our services uh going and revived. You'll notice that you can now uh drop in and pick up your reserve, uh hold uh materials as well as going to the light, the lobby uh for a certain period of time with a limited capacity, of course. Um, but they're doing a really good job uh of delivering those services and keeping everyone safe. The Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Authority met on October 22nd as well. Um, we approved a contract for a new executive director. His name is Eric Nickel. And um, one of the comments I made had to do with outreach to populations that um generally don't necessarily get interested in that particular subject matter or administration for that matter. And I think that we can, you know, just pay attention to it over time, and uh they did try to uh cast a broad net. It just, you know, was the fact that y, you don't really have a whole lot of people of um diverse backgrounds um i, in this field to begin with, so. Um, you know, reaching out to different populations and, you know, teaching them about this area, uh, I think is a really good thing that we could do uh in the future there. On the 27th, as Rod mentioned, the Audit Committee did meet. Uh, our fiscal health looks really good, um, you know, especially given the circumstances. Um, finance is working on the budget format. I think they're doing a really good job. Um, I, 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 the residents are really going to enjoy the um, the tax calculator that they've come up with. A couple of days after the Audit Committee meeting, uh, we had um, a, a meeting, a gathering on Zoom of several uh stakeholders and residents um trying out the new residential tax calculator. So we look uh to be able to roll out that pretty soon, and essentially what it is, is um an online tool where uh you can basically put in your property value as well as the approximate amount that you spend in Cupertino every year, and it'll show you how that all breaks down with regard to property taxes, sales taxes, what goes to the school districts, um, and what is coming back to the city. Um, I, I do think that from the audit perspective, um, it, it does make sense to, and I take a look at performance, so I, I'm trying to advocate for that over the course of uh the upcoming couple of years. Um, but all in all, I would say that we have been performing very well fiscally. Um, and it is a credit to our lookout well for our fiscal health, so, uh, thanks. Oh, one thing I will say, um, I, I just want to make a comment on the um, on the COVID rates. Um, and I think this does bear um stating, you know, Cupertino by about 50% has the lowest rate of COVID of all the cities uh in Santa Clara County. And I think um, you know, i, i, it's great administration. Uh, Deb mentioned that 20 cases up since the last time is significant. It is significant. Um, the fact of the matter is we would still be about 50% under Saratoga, which is the next uh lowest uh in, in our, in our county. Um, I think that, uh, and I had mentioned this to Deb in the interim. I think that some stepped up enforcement, it just general reminders by our code enforcement as well as uh some of the sheriff's deputies, if they see larger gatherings such as, you know, in our more major retail centers um of people walking around without masks and they're not exercising, I think it would be a really good idea to um, you know, kind of give those reminders. I mean, this is not punitive. Um, this is really just a matter of uh trying to make sure that, that transmission is, is curbed to the maximum extent possible. So, thanks. That's it.
All right, very good. Um, so Rod already talked about the unhoused task force. Um, that was very eye-opening, and I hope that we can implement some of the uh suggestions that we came up with. Uh, a lot of it comes down to funding, of course. Um, you know, the end of redevelopment really put a crimp in uh our ability to uh build subsidized housing. Um, and right now, for the short term, the things we're looking at like uh sanctioned encampments and um you know, RVs and, and cars. I mean, the, I mean, we can do better. We, we can do better than that in one of the richest areas of the country. Um, so it was hopeful, but a little bit depressing as well. Um, the other thing that I was at was West Valley Mayor's meeting. Uh, we had a big discussion regarding uh VTA and the proposal that's coming to divert all the VTA money um Bart to San Jose. So it basically, all other projects, uh even including road maintenance uh would be severely underfunded, so we could fund Bart. Um, this is, was not the intention of um This is, was not the intention of the measure B funding, the sales tax measure when it was passed. Obviously, you don't divert all road maintenance to the very end of the, of the sales tax measure. So I don't know how much power we have here because San Jose does have disproportionate number of votes on this. But it would really, it would affect the ability to ever pass another sales tax measure for transit and road maintenance if all the money was taken away and sent to BAR. It was even mentioned, you know, should measure B be overturned if they try to do this? Because all these people that voted for it are not getting what they were, what they were promised. So stay tuned. It's not clear what's going to happen with this yet. I'm sure Darcy and Rod know more about this, but there was probably no meeting in the last two weeks about this. We just had our representative, Rob Rennie, give us a report.
Yeah, I really appreciate your bringing this up again, right? And this is something that we need to be briefed by staff on, on a regular basis. And I would really hope that, and I think the only effective leverage is to band together with other cities and launch a big campaign and say, hey, you know, this is not, this is not, this is not right. We may not win at V T A, but we can win in the court of public opinion. And we need to use the bully pulpit here, I think, to prevent this, this frankly extraction, right? We all had a, I guess in hindsight, we could have thought, oh, gosh, you know, we could have written in a fair distribution throughout the life of the measure. But, yeah, they got us again, as they did in 2000. The way they got us in 2000 was by letting a simple majority of the board reallocate. This time, we fixed that, but now we have this new problem. So it's just a never-ending chase. And I hope we can get together with other cities and say, look, we need a fair distribution of funding for our transit projects as well as our road maintenance. And, you know, it's not just the next sales tax measure that's threatened. It's any new measure coming up. If we can't trust them on this one, I mean, when are we going to be able to trust them? So this is sort of independent of funding source in my view. So thank you for raising.
Right. And I think it's affecting all of the tax measures that ever go on the ballot, not just, yes, county-wide ones.
And also it destroys, it destroys our, you know, the regional cooperation that we've had to cheat us again. It's just the wrong thing to do.
And this is related, you know, indirectly to the whole V M T discussions as well.
You're making a report. You're making, you're making a report.
Okay. All right, so we are done with the committee assignments. We are on to the consent calendar. Did anybody want to pull anything from consent? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Well, all right. I'll make a motion to adopt the whole consent calendar, and John seconded. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Number Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we're on to the second reading of ordinances. So the first one is second reading of ordinance number 202213, adopting municipal code amendments to Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control to Regulate Leaf Blowers to Implement the Fiscal Year 2020 to 2021 Council Work Program, Items Related to Ordinance Updates on Gas Power Leaf Blowers, Application Note M C A 2020-002, applicant of city Cupertino and location is citywide. So Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the second reading?
This is the second reading of an enactment of ordinance number 20-2213, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Cupertino to amend Chapter 10.48, Community Noise Control to Adopt Leaf Blower Regulations.
Okay, so, I think you said to both conduct and enact, right? So we only need one vote. Is that correct?
Two votes, one to read the title of the ordinance by title, and then one to enact.
All right, okay. I make a motion to read this ordinance by title only.
I'll second.
Do you want me to, so just to complete it, Mr. Mayor, by title only, in that the city clerk's reading would constitute the second reading?
I'm sorry, yeah. The city clerk's reading will constitute the second, yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, when I'm up on the dais, I have the text right in front of me to read, but I don't have that here. Okay, so item 19, second reading of ordinance number 202214.
Oh, we have to enact the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're, okay, okay. Yeah, you're right. Okay. That's right. I always forget that. Okay. Okay, so I'll make the motion to enact ordinance number 202213, 20-2213.
I'll second.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, number 19, second reading of ordinance number 202214, to adopt minor cleanup amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code, Section 2.04-010, concerning regular meetings of the City Council, Section 2.28.040, concerning powers and duties of city manager, Section 8.01.090, concerning animals and city buildings, Chapter 11.08, concerning bicycle licensing and registration, and Section 13.04.190, concerning activities prohibited in city parks. Okay. So can I have a motion for this to conduct? Well, Madam City Clerk, can you conduct the second reading of this ordinance, 202214?
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 20-2214, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending Cupertino Municipal Code, Section 2.04.010, concerning regular meetings of the City Council, Section 2.28.040, concerning powers and duties of the city manager, Section 8.01.090, concerning animals and city buildings, Chapter 11.08, concerning bicycle licensing and registration, and Section 13.04.190, concerning activities prohibited in city parks.
All right, thank you. Darcy, can you do this so I don't screw it up again?
Yeah, I'll move, I'll make an omnibus motion that ordinance number 20-2214 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the second reading thereof. And furthermore, I move that ordinance number 20-2214 be enacted.
Second.
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion is carried unanimously.
Okay, and that was to enact it as well, right? That was.
Correct.
Okay, wonderful. Item 20, the second reading of ordinance number 20-2215 for a one-time adjustment to the City of Cupertino Minimum Wage to be consistent with the cities of Los Altos, Palo Alto, and Santa Clara, such that the minimum wage will be consistent among these cities in the City of Cupertino in 2021 and in subsequent years to achieve a desired uniformity among the cities of Los Altos, Palo Alto, and Santa Clara.
I'll move that the mayor's reading constitute the second reading thereof. And secondly, that we enact.
Great.
And it's actually the, the city clerk's reading is the second reading, not, not the.
Oh, I thought the mayor did it. No? Fine, the city clerk. Do you have to say anything more then?
I will, I will read it. Just do the.
Okay, fine. After nine years of practice, you think I might have it by now. Go for it.
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 20-2215, ordinance to the City Council of the City of Cupertino to set the minimum wage for 2021 at $15.65 per hour.
Okay, second. Okay, I seconded it.
I firsted it.
Okay, can we have a vote?
Councilmember Chow?
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, does anyone need a break? We've been going for two and a half hours.
So just to clarify, did, so did Councilmember Sinks also make a dual motion?
He did.
Yeah.
He did, yes, he did. To approve the second reading and also to enact.
Yeah, he did.
How efficient.
Indeed.
So five minutes, Mayor?
All right, yeah, let's reconvene at 7:56 then.